All right, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? All right, so we need an approval of last meeting's minutes.
And there's two sets of minutes just now.
Oh, yeah.
So the regular meeting for August 24th and then the specialty.
So this is for the first meeting?
Aye, so move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we need approval for the second meeting's minutes.
I move to approve the second meeting's minutes.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, reports.
All right, in the elementary enrollment is at 196. Those numbers per class are listed there. Start of the new year, we are new hires, teachers and paras are integrating into their classroom environments nicely. We started the year whole this year, filling all of our positions, it was great. The paras that we've been able to secure and the teachers that we've been able to secure seem to be melding into the situation very well, and so I'm very excited about our staff and the team that we've assembled, doing some great things already. Been able to get into a lot of classrooms this year, been posting a few cool things on Facebook about the exciting learning opportunities that our kids are having, so very good stuff there. Building looked excellent after the summer cleaning, Scott and his crew did a spectacular job down our hall. It, I mean, we walked in, it looked, it looked really, really great, so big kudos to them for doing such a great job getting us ready to roll. Classrooms are magical space again, teachers have worked hard to make them welcoming and conducive to learning, especially our new hires. I think they were in there like most of August and getting everything just right, so the, the building does look really good in that respect. Map testing is underway, should be complete by the end of the week or early next week at the latest. This year, we are going to map test our early literacy class. That's not something that we have done in the past, but we are going to get some baseline data on them as well and kind of get them familiar with how to take those map tests so that they are ready to go once they enter into full-time kindergarten. Current projects we're working on, a couple of additions to our practice this year. We're drawing two students out of the Trojan ticket hat to be honorary captains at our high school sporting events. Excuse me, we did our first one last Friday. Little kids got to wear a jersey, Mr. Salvani fixed them all up and they came out and were part of the introduction of our starters at the home game. We thought that was pretty fun. Coach Jenkins would like to get in on this as well, so we'll be doing that for volleyball. And those Trojan tickets that are awarded to kids for getting caught doing the right thing go into a hat and we draw out of them to lucky people that get to be honorary captains at our sporting events. So kids seemed to really enjoy that, one was really excited, one was very shy, but it was, it was pretty cute to have him out there. And soon as they saw me, I was at least a friendly face that they recognized, so it worked out pretty nice. We do have a teacher bio page on the website, if you haven't checked that out, please look at it. At the request of PTSA last year, I put out a Google form and asked all of our team to fill out just some biographical information about themselves. And I'm still missing a couple, I'll try to track those down, but the bulk of them are up there, all of the teachers are, missing a couple of paras is all. So please check that out, it's just underneath the elementary school page at the bottom, it says, "Meet Our Team." And we are starting a Trojan advisory group, this is something that's come up in our comprehensive needs assessment every year. It's been an area where the elementary team feels that we are missing an opportunity to hear the student's voice. And so we came up with this plan over the summer where each classroom nominates one kid. So we have six coming out of the three-five and six out of the K-2. And they serve a two-week term on this tag group. And they come down once a week and do the announcements with us, and then I meet with them that same day at lunch, we have a lunch meeting. And I basically just hear their stories, what's happening out on the playground, what would you like to see different? How are things, you know, what's, what's awesome, what do you love about school? And then we can, once we have some of that information to look back on, we can impact change or celebrate great successes, as the case might be. So it's in its infancy, I had my first meeting, lunch meeting today with the three-five group and they came up with some, some pretty fun ideas, some of them, well, most of them are not quite feasible. But they are thinking about it, and so I was like, all right, well, I was able to explain, this is why we, you know, can't plant flowers out in the, the green space, even though it would look nice. But I like the way you're thinking, let's see what we can come up with next week. So we'll see how that goes, and I'm excited to see it finally off the ground.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Looking ahead, homecoming is around the corner, and they did successfully move that week, I'm glad that we did. So we'll keep our Trojan spirit up in the E-Lit through five. We do have the parent open house coming up on September 13th. And the elementary will be setting up in the Tia Gym, we're not going to do classrooms. We do not want, we want it to be something different than parent-teacher conferences. This is something that we'd like to set up, again, a recommendation from our parent groups to have parents, family, community members, et cetera, come in and meet the staff. And that starts at one o'clock and runs till three. Yep, and we have, Barb Ryder is going to come over and set up a booth for Parenting Montana. The nurses will be there to answer any questions that they may have, and of course, Ms. Steph will be in the office to, we're, you know, trying to encourage K-12, everybody getting on the Infinite Campus portal, know how to access it, keep an eye on their kids' grades, et cetera, so she'll be there to support that as well. All in all, great energy in the entire campus, really. Mr. Slater and I were talking about that today, I think we might have been talking about it in our, our admin meeting. There is a good energy among the kids right now and among the staff, and want to capitalize on that, keep that rolling, keep that excitement about being a Trojan, being a part of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is only going to make us a stronger community. So I'm very excited about this year, it's great to be back, it's great to see the kids, and great to see my team again. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Con.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right, good to be here, I was so excited at our last board meeting and then didn't give a report, which is great, I didn't need to, but so excited to give your report today, just because there's so much stuff going on. This summer I was lucky enough to get sent to the National Principal Conference. And the thing about professional development like that, you get so excited, you want to share, you want to share, you have to really kind of taper yourself down. Last year, beginning of the year, I just had too much, this year really trying to focus our start to the year. One thing I want to do is start with thanks, Curtis hit it already, but from the parking lot to the front door, our school looks so good. The amount of work that Mr. Prevost and our 21st Century and Jen, and I don't want to leave anybody out, the work they did getting the school ready. Kristen Worth does these things, these posters along, or the bulletin boards, bulletin boards aren't something that a lot of high school teachers really, that's not really their thing. Elementary, they crush it usually, right? We do a great job too, right? Whitehall 612 looking good, you can see what she's done down the middle school. So I want to definitely recognize those guys as well, our schools are ready to go, they did a great job. Parking lot looks good, I think they said there was five or six layers of paint on the front doors. That wasn't something that they appreciated tackling, I shouldn't use the word appreciated, they just did a great job. Yeah, they, yeah, it was apparently a ton of work. All right, so the first thing, a remarkable vision that I had, the older I get and the longer I do this, I do believe that the hardest thing in leadership is getting everyone to work together. The remarkable vision is developing a culture where students, teachers, parents, admin, we all work together towards school-wide goals. Everything with my school leadership team, with student council, we filter through our school-wide goals. This year, we also started with a big emphasis on the profile of a graduate. These things aren't separate, they complement one another, and how do we guide our daily steps? So following when I provided those, I also provided my annual goals at the last meeting in a handout. I'm always welcome to, or you're welcome to stop by if you have any questions about those things. Recognizing great staff, one thing that was crazy before I added this was how fast summer went. But even more crazy, we returned all of our staff in the 612. And the people that have been around have told me that's just straight incredible. So as far as getting off to a good start, the continuity and having all that staff come back, we're only plus-one because we added FCS with Shawna McCoy, that's awesome. So looking at my notes from last year, I had about seven new folks. So very excited to have all those people returning and then just upping our game from where we were last year. Next thing, 612 secretary, we've had some shift in positions, she was previously a para. Super proud of the work that both Mr. Salvani is doing in supporting her and Mrs. Nieskens as well, as she's learning so many things and working so hard. This year, we added a study hall supervisor, that's Ms. Trish Scarborough, she's doing a great job in there too, new role. What is that, one of the big changes this year where you elect being in-person, online, excuse me, yeah, with a supervisor here on campus or off campus. She's doing a good job with that in our hallway behaviors, our halls are way cleaned up. So here it is where I put that in, I believe summer's all over. So these changes, and because there's so many changes, to narrow it down to what to keep for a short report for the board, these are big-time things. Middle school cellphone policy, the amount of pushback, I anticipated a lot of pushback, hardly any. One parent, honestly, and there's always got to be the one, right? So was upset about that, other than that, I've heard more praise and positives than any negative. Besides the fact that it's now a national topic, our middle school walking the halls, and again, it's all about enforcement. That's credit to our teachers, they, yeah, another thing I got coming back from a conference and speaking with Hannah was, "Begin as you mean to go." She said that at the last board meeting, really pushing that with my staff. The students, the students have been awesome, for, for the most part. So I've had one phone in the office that was taking over that, I expected a lot more, so I really appreciate, and I won't leave out the parents. All those parents were awesome about it. High school on campus, off campus, that was again, something that was asked about by the staff, we came up with a, a solution, and it is working. It's really, it is so much better and the distractions down by our student lounge are way better. The addition of dual-credit math and English, and different people step up, we've had a lot going on, a lot to make that happen. Credit goes with that to Hannah, it does, she's worked with a ton of kids, making sure they get signed up and get stuff paid for, and doing those dual-credit classes for their seniors. The other thing we have is Ms. Burkerman and Ms. Roy supporting that. Last, this is just a list, and this isn't all of them, just so the board's aware, this is additions in our school. Addition FCS curriculum, we just added FFA just a couple of years ago, FCS curriculum across the board, those classes have good enrollment. High school film, there's 23 kids in that class, that's in our business ed program. It's a class where kids are going to be able to create shorts right now, and he went over it with me a little bit. I'm not an expert on it, but I love the energy that our teacher, Mr. Leary, and the kids are experiencing there. Native American Studies by Ms. Kidd, brand-new, it is a standard in the state of Montana, but in addition to all teachers doing Native American Studies, she added a class as a history elective. Intro to Chem Phys, that comes up with what most people are doing in the state of Montana as well. Those are just a few highlights across the board. We just hit it really good, I'm really proud of the work that our staff's doing. I mentioned that professional development a little bit, I love going to the national conference, that was something that primarily was funded by MASSP, my state professional organization, but was also supported by the district and in fact encouraged by the district, so I really appreciate that as well. Pullaways from that, I got to sit in on a session with Sal Kahn, he's the creator of Kahn Academy, and to hear his perspectives on AI today and in the future, from somebody that is absolutely being in the presence of somebody, I believe, I mean, he's just extremely intelligent, knows what he's talking about, and he said, "Teachers are not going to get replaced." There's a little bit of fear in the education of, "What does this mean for us and our jobs?" No, getting that fear away and learning how to guide it, and we're so lucky to have the resource of Colton Anderson to help when I came back. Him and I shared a couple of things, good stuff. In addition, another big education guy, Jimmy Casa, and part of it's just the networking. Met a colleague from Billings, middle school principal, him and I spent a ton of time together, just helping me get better. I mean, putting myself around and having the opportunity to be around people that are top-shelf in our career is huge. So, numbers are on the back, I add it up real quick, overall, we're up a little bit, which is good. We've had gradual growth, Hannah went over that the other day, that's not true in all of our districts. A lot of high schools principals I'm talking to have actually lost some, and one of the biggest increases people are seeing is homeschool. And because we've provided our online option, I think that really helped our high school in a lot of ways, where people have that option, so being flexible and actually being on the leading edge of that. There are plenty of districts in the state of Montana that weren't poised to, to be on solid ground, so. The 612's off to a good start, yes, we've had a few discipline things, but according to my staff, I'm very excited about a lot of stuff going on in our school, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slater.
Mr. Chair, before Mrs. Nieskens goes, I probably should have put this in under public comments, but if you'll indulge me for a second, I don't think people may realize the amount of work that Mrs. Nieskens put in to securing a grant so that online kids do not have to pay for those classes. And as a parent, that was amazing, so thank you, Mrs. Nieskens, I really appreciate it.
We have 18 kids taking college classes.
Yeah.
All for free, yeah. That's the Advanced Opportunities Grant that you guys approved last year. So there's, there's 18 of our high school kids taking college classes, at least one, some of them are taking four.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I am going to give the AD's report and also my report, so I'll start with the AD report. This information was provided to me by Mr. Salvani, and it is up to date as of this afternoon, so. Fall Student Athletes by Sport, we have nine in high school cheer, 11 in cross-country, 26 in high school football, 29 in high school volleyball, 32 in middle school football, 33 in middle school volleyball, for a total of 140 fall sports athletes. Regarding our co-ops, we have one participating from Harrison, six from, I'm, I'm sorry, one from Cardwell, six from Harrison, five from Willow Creek, four from homeschool, and the remaining 124 are from Whitehall. Regarding activity fees, because, you know, that's the biggest change that we've had this year. Of those 140 athletes, 100 have already self-paid. Six have been paid for using the Gold Junction present, presents scholarships, so. Well, there, it's six unique kids, three of them are getting paid for two different seasons, that's what I was told by Jason. So six in the fall. Four students are using Snap Raise to crowdfund, so even though all kids were offered that opportunity. And 30 have until Friday to pay and have not started a Snap Raise account, so. 30 that, that have until Friday, but they have been told over and over how to do it and don't seem to be taking advantage of the crowdfunding opportunity. So it's an interesting thing, it's typical for us to have this many kids up until the very last day who haven't paid. So this is not atypical, this actually matches trends that we've seen in previous years. But it was surprising to me how many kids have not participated in Snap Raise, that's kind of, that was surprising for me. Also, Laura had shared this with me, and I know she intended to be here tonight and share it. There was like three separate opportunities over the summer for, where the community was initiating opportunities for kids to do fundraising and earn their entire activity fee, and not a single kid signed up for any of those three opportunities. And they could have paid their entire hundred-dollar fee from any one of those. So that was also surprising to me, that there's been multiple opportunities for kids to completely take care of their fee and, and no one took advantage of those things, so. I guess that means they must be able to cover it themselves, I mean, that's kind of the point that we're at at this point. So, other information, Homecoming Week is September 16th through the 21st. And that will feature a football game versus Townsend on Friday the 20th, and a high school volleyball game versus Boulder on Saturday the 21st. I know that Mr. Slater was telling me earlier that they're working on doing the bonfire pending approval from the fire department, which is always up to the minute because we don't know the fire conditions until the very last point, so.
Does that help?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah, we can all hear the skylight. Anyhow, hopefully that occurs, it's something the kids really look forward to, so that is what I have as far as an AD report. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report then, just an update on our hiring. We are still hiring for one para position and one kitchen helper position, so if anyone's looking for a job that matches their kids' hours, those are still available and advertised on our website. As Curtis was stating, Friday the September 13th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. is our parent open house. This was kind of driven by, in large part by PTSA requesting it to be built into our calendar, which we did. And in addition to Barb Ryder coming from Parenting Montana, we also have in the 612, Reach Hires coming to do a presentation on FAFSA, I believe, and the Internet Child Safety Task Force, you have a rep coming from that, is that correct? Yeah, so there's some educational opportunities for parents as well, and then if parents have not met their kids' teachers previously, especially if you're people new to our community, new to our school, or just meeting new teachers to our district, that's a good chance for our parents and community to do so. I also have with me the Jefferson County Montana Community Health Assessment, which Pam Hannah shared with me at the end of last week, and she asked me to share out to you. You may remember sometime back, there was a big push for, in the community, to get surveys returned regarding health and health needs in Jefferson County. And this, it's a monster report, like 69-page report is a result of that survey, lots of data was collected. And their priority areas for moving forward, that their working group decided to focus on for the coming years, are healthcare access and quality, and then mental and behavioral health being the top one. So those are kind of all-encompassing, and I'll just pass this around if you just want to take a peek at it, there's a lot of interesting information in there. I guess a startling statistic I found was all of the data on suicide ideation in our county specifically. It's, it's really alarming, it's like one in four people have thought about it in the past year. So that's, that's extraordinarily high, and obviously what makes mental and behavioral health their top priority, so. It is a public. Perhaps, I would assume so, it's, it's definitely something they're trying to share out, which is why she asked me to share it. And I know, I believe you probably received it as well, Liz, I mean, they're definitely trying to get the word out on the results. I, do you know if it's on the website, I would assume. Public Health has a website, so I would think so. Yeah. What's that? Yeah, that's, that's what the data stated, which, I mean, to me seems extraordinarily high, so maybe it's not, I don't know.
It's a little lower than the average in Montana.
Mm-hmm.
Our county also doesn't have a victim's advocate to help anybody that has those rights.
Yeah, yeah, there, I mean, and that's, that's why I think one of their things is healthcare access, and yeah, I mean, there's.
Jefferson County is almost three times the national average for suicide.
Yeah, it's, it was extraordinarily concerning when you look at the stats. So I am sharing that with you, it's coming around, please take a peek at that, and then I assume there's, there's probably an online version, which I will share out if I locate the link. Some good news, the 21st Century Grant that we were kind of waiting to hear on, and we went into summer and didn't really have the outcome on, we did receive it for five years, it is a K-12 grant, so before we had only a K-8 grant, and now it has been expanded to K-12, and we have $220,530 a year for five years. So our Friday program and our robust summer program will continue to exist for at least five more years, which is something that's exciting to share. So a lot of thanks goes to Lindsay Mowen and Kristen Worth, who are our 21st Century Program Directors, who authored the grant and have kept us moving forward with that. It's a great, great opportunity to provide additional programming for our kids. For the high school piece, it will also fund some unique opportunities, because we have never had a 912, 21st Century Grant in the past grant cycle. I guess we did the original grant cycle, so we did almost a decade ago, but now we're back to that. So one of the things that it'll fund is the fencing club that Tim is going to take charge of. And it's also going to help continue our esports opportunities, our high, our high school weightlifting opportunities through the summer, and those kind of things, so there's a lot of, we're expanding our opportunities for kids to become involved in other ways in our community. And let's see, what else do I have here? I think that is everything, I've already talked about the kids in college classes, which was on my list, so that's all.
Any questions?
I have one too, I have one for 21st Century for after-school on Fridays, does it get used during the week?
So current, we have not yet started the Friday program, so we never quite know until we see who shows up. But the current list, I believe, has 35. So that's, that's typical for us, like that was kind of our number from last year too. And not every kid comes every, there are, there are routine kids who come every single time, and then there are kids who come every other time. So you never do quite know exactly how many you're going to have, but that's how many are currently signed up.
Thank you, Mrs. Nieskens, on to new business, approve substitute staff list.
So that is on your iPad, there's a few additions, and you'll see some names you recognize from before. These are the current people who have signed up to sub for us, and of course, we are always hiring subs. We would love to have additional people on our sub list, it's a struggle for every district to obtain subs. So we're very fortunate to have the ones we do, and I recommend approving that list.
So Hannah, this is all the substitutes that are available?
Yes, and this is why we often use our para staff to sub, because we just don't have a lot of subs, and they don't all sub every single day, so, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the substitute teacher list?
I move to approve.
All seconded up.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, hire occupational therapy aide, Deb Stone.
So actually, that, Deb has withdrawn from the process for consideration for that, and I was, I just obtained that information tonight. But just making you aware of this, so it's not an action item. This is actually Prickly Pear Co-op's occupational therapy aide. We would simply hire that person, pay them, and then Prickly Pear Special Education Co-op would reimburse us for their wages. So truly, this is kind of a cooperative agreement between us, it would cost us zero dollars. So if anyone is interested in being a one-day-a-week OT aide, contact Prickly Pear. I think you can pick your day, it doesn't matter, Monday through Thursday.
You can.
Is Prickly Pear out of Helena?
Prickly Pear is our special education co-op, they're, they're out of East Helena, that's where their office is, but like Jerry Wolk and Margaret Orr, who spend their entire workday in our building, work for Prickly Pear, they do not work for us, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So our IDEA grant, which is our special aid grant, we give all of the money to Prickly Pear and we become part of the consortium. And basically, we get a school psych, we get speech, we get PT, OT, all these services for our students who need them, which we otherwise would not be able to fund if, unless we were in the co-op, so it's like a crowdfunding with different districts, basically.
All right, then we can move to the next one, hire para professionals, Andrew Horton and Kelly Dodd.
Right, so you may remember, we were advertising for multiple positions at the start of the year, and we were fortunate enough to.
year and we were fortunate enough to have these two ladies apply. They are extremely qualified and thanks to our new fingerprinting process, we have fingerprints back within a day, so that's also great. So we can get everyone in and working as quickly as possible, so I would recommend hiring those two.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Move to hire Andrea Horton and Kelly Dodd as para professionals.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Valley Bank requests to put school logo on debit or credit cards.
Yeah, so Valley Bank took over for Rocky Mountain Bank and they would like to have a Trojan logoed debit card, which we would provide them with our logo. According to board policy, board has to authorize use of that. And Mr. Salvani did say to me that there is some sort of kickback that we get. I don't know if it's per transaction or per card, but the school actually gets some monetary benefit from allowing them to do this if people request that card. So I think it'll be fun to see our logo out on people's cards in the community. I would certainly rather have that than the plain green one I have now. So, please approve.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve adding the logo.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, we need to have a motion to approve the elementary claims and accounts.
I move to approve the elementary claims and accounts.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. High school.
I'll move to approve the high school accounts.
Can I second that?
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.
Yes, there's a pause there.